Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education. Organizational meeting of Monday, January 14th. Call and roll, please.
Mr. Abraham.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Step.
Here.
All members present?
All right. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Follow my movements.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item D is election of officers for the coming year. So, first item is president. Any nominations for president from the Board of Education?
I'll nominate Mr. Stark.
Any other nominations? Last time, no other nominations, right? Okay, I'll second the motion. Call and roll, please.
Ms. Step.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abraham.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Mr. Abraham speaking for now.
You're allowed to vote for yourself. Item two, vice president. Nominations for vice president. I will nominate Shelley Ennis for vice president. Any other nominations? Any other nominations for vice president? Okay, call and roll, please.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Step.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yeah.
Ms. Abraham.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Item three, appoint Crystal Russell to serve as legislative liaison with the Ohio School Board Association of 2019. I'll move. Anyone else want to volunteer? Call and roll, please.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abraham.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Ms. Step.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Item four, appoint. You?
Or you, I don't care.
All right, appoint Sarah Steph to serve as student liaison, student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2019.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call and roll, please.
Mr. Abraham.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Ms. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
All right, item, well, this is new board president presiding, so we should maybe switch. Do you want to start or?
Item E, standing resolutions. New board president presiding recommend resolution to approve the following standing resolutions for 2019. Number one, establish the second Monday of each month at 7:00 PM for the day and time of regular meetings for 2019. February 11th, 2019, March 11th, April 8th, May 13th, June 10th, July 8th, August 12th, September 9th, October 14th, November 11th, September 9th, 2019, and January 13th, 2020. And that will be the organizational meeting. Item two, designate the Vermillion Photo Journal as official newspaper. Item three, direct the treasurer to provide copies of the minutes of both last meetings two days prior to the next regular meeting and to waive the reading of the minutes of said is done. Number four, authorize the treasurer to pay on abstracts and invoices monthly salaries and bills within the approved appropriations. Request from the area and Marin County auditors advances on tax settlements and monies as are collected. Invest the funds of the district as they are available. Establish the funds as necessary when requesting by law or order of the state. Approve student activity funds, purpose statements, and budgets. Approve and read bids immediately after the time for filing of bids has expired. Number five, authorize superintendent or his designee to act as a purchasing agent, act as a federal program coordinator, act as compliance officer for the Equal Education Opportunities Act, Title 54, Title 49. And then 1972 Civil Rights Act, Family and Medical Act, Bureau of Workers' Compensation slash Public Employment Risk Reduction Act Program, Individual with Disabilities Education Act, American with Disabilities Act, 504 Coordinator. Approve the emergency and temporary employment of personnel in compliance with policy. Provide coordination of the required bestest inspections. Act as a safety coordinator. Approve the use of school buses within the state and local roads. Approve the use of a bottom of tier and/or employee's personal automobile to transport students to or from school or school-sponsored activities. Number six, authorize the building principals to sign contracts such as student activity contracts, student pictures, school annual athletic contests, and the like. Number seven, appoint the superintendent or his designee as the board of education's hearing officer for appeals or suspension and expulsion of students. Authorize the appointment of the board's representative to act as a designee for the Board of Education to hear student expulsion appeals. Number nine, authorize the director, authorize the athletic director to act as purchasing agent for the athletic fund. Number 10, establish a service fund in amount allowed by law of $3,500 for the Board of Education within the general fund for the remainder of the fiscal year 2018 and for fiscal year 2019. Number 11, appoint Jeff Keck to serve on the Vermillion City Parks and Recreation Boards for 2019. Number 12, authorize participation in state and federal programs as they become available. Number 13, authorize the treasurer to submit an alternative tax budget for fiscal year 2020 to the budget commission in a timely fashion of the attached date. Number 14, appoint the following firms as legal counsel. Berger and Eckler LLP, Ennis Britton Company, LPA, Peppel and Leganier Limited, Smith Peters and Calicat Company, Kaleo, O'Toole, McLaughlin, Dooley, and Bacora Company, LPA, Walter Haverfield LLP, and Squire, Patton, Boggs, LPA. Any discussions?
This time, we'd like a true organizational meeting. Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abraham.
Yes.
Ms. Step.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
654. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education meeting, the regular meeting, Monday, January 14th, 2019.
Call and roll, please.
Mr. Abraham.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Step.
Here.
All members present? If I could have my citizens up, come line up here, please. Sure. You're good. So, what's your name? Deborah. What grade are you in? Third. Who's your teacher? What would you like to do when you grow up? That's okay, you got time. You want to go to the back of the line? Then we'll have the next one. Hi, what's your name?
Justin.
What grade are you in?
Third grade.
Who do you teach?
Mrs. Davinson.
What do you want to do when you grow up?
Scientist.
Scientist, thanks. Come back in line. Go back to the other line. Hi, what's your name?
Cole.
What grade are you in?
Second.
Who do you teach?
Ms. Becker.
Who do you want to do when you grow up?
A flutter trigger.
All right. What grade are you in? Who do you teach?
Mrs. Bailey.
What do you want to do when you grow up?
I said.
Okay. Hi.
Alexis.
What grade?
Second.
Who do you teach?
Ms. Garcia.
What do you want to do when you grow up?
Better.
Okay. Hi, what's your name?
Molly.
What grade are you in?
Third.
Which age are you in?
Mr. Wilson.
What would you like to do when you grow up?
Actor.
Okay. Hi, what's your name?
Owen.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who do you teach?
Mrs. Low.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
An actor in a horror movie.
Okay, so you guys got to say the pledge of allegiance. Hey, if it arrives, you guys say the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence. You guys want to start? You guys all start? Are you ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Next on the agenda, item five, student liaison report.
Uh, so we have Renee Myers tonight, and she brought a couple of kids as well. She is a sixth grade science teacher, and she's going to talk to us about some virtual labs that are in their classroom and kind of show us some stuff. First of all, I'd like to say thanks for having us, really appreciate it. Crystal, thanks for the opportunity to come here and tell me and share with you guys. We do a lot of exciting things in sixth grade science at St. Louis. Two of my top science students, Claire Bartlamay and Gavin Berger, they're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the stuff that we've been doing this year, especially the virtual labs that we've been doing. Gavin, you want to come on up and start your little presentation? We do a lot of virtual labs to start with, and then we do the hands-on labs. So, the virtual labs kind of show us some of the tools and get the kids a little bit more comfortable with what they're going to see. One of the state standards we're studying is rocks and minerals and being able to identify them, and these two did a wonderful job, so I said, hey, come on, let's show them what we got. So, they're here to start. Gavin's going to kind of just take a couple of minutes and walk you through one of the virtual labs that we did, identify minerals, so. Hi, Bud.
So, I first take one of the minerals in these slots. I put it at this table, and I have four different tests I can do. First I would do is I combine the color and luster, and it's a black color with a little bit of metallic on it. And then there's three different hardness tests. One of them is a fingernail, and that mark right there, it means it's softer than a fingernail. So, because glass is sharper, harder than a fingernail, so we don't have to do the glass. And then we try to find the color of the streak, and it's no color.
So, after doing this, they would be taking notes on a sheet that looks like this and marking down all their results as they go, so then they can refer back to this when they try to identify the mineral.
And then after I do all the tests, I go into the mineral book and look through every mineral there is and look at all the choices there are for the hardness, streak color, color, weight, which, and fracture, and luster, and try to find what matches this mineral right here. So, I look through all the other ones, and this one looks like it a bit because the color shows it's black to a dark brown, which is a brown here with black. The streak color was colorless and it was softer than a fingernail, so that was basically a possible lead of the theme of biotite mica. But before I choose my answer for that, I look through every other one, and I first look at the color because I look first test I did, and right here it says it's for white, so I know it would be that. And then Barry, it wouldn't be that either, and I just keep going through all the other ones until I find out which one I think it is. And then I go into here and I pick which one and I hit check.
Congratulations, you have correctly identified the selected mineral sample.
And again, that's what makes him a good student because notice he went through the whole thing before he just guessed. There wasn't like the guess, it was checking all the different tests that he did. So, each student did this for five different minerals, and it got him familiar with the tools that we use as well in the classroom. And then we started on the real hands-on lab where each student would get something that looked like this that has all the tools actually in it. And then we get a tray of minerals with different numbers, and they would have to identify. So, Claire, I'll let you get this out of your way so they can see you.
Okay, so the first thing I would do was pick them out. This is the mineral that I choose. The second thing I would try to find out was the color. This one is colorless, it is transparent.
And again, she would use the same sheet, taking notes on each one, just like they did in the virtual lab.
You would find the streak, you would use a streak plate. This one is white to colorless. The luster, this is like shiny and not metallic. The hardness, you would use the most hardness scale, and the first thing you would do was use a penny, so fingernail, and try to scratch it. It doesn't scratch. And then you would use a penny, and it kind of scratches it. Then you would use a nail to try to scratch it, and that does scratch it.
So, do you remember what a nail was on most of this? Four point four.
So, it would be two, three, which would be a penny, and a four, which would be the nail. That would be hard. Did you check that? Here. There you go. Then I would look at this and see this, the calcite says usually white but also colorless. The streak is white, the luster is not metallic, and the hardest would be three. This is, that's very close to this one, so I would identify it as a calcite.
And with the hands-on, we don't really have a way to check and say congratulations, but so they turned it in and then I would check on it, but again, she did a great job. And here, they had 11 minerals total. So, you can see though how using this with all the tools makes it so much easier though to actually do the hands-on. This year, thanks to the Vermillion Education Foundation, we are dissecting frogs again in sixth grade as part of our state standards for organs and organ systems, and so we also have a virtual lab for that before we actually diamond, so they can see the organs and organ systems, and you know, when they do the frog, it'll be a lot more beautiful. But, yeah, thank you guys. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Is this something you can do at home or is it just going to start for your school?
Nope, they can do that at home as well, so, yeah. And like I said, there's so many of those. We had one for rocks, who we pet over the rocks, and we enjoyed it. It really helps them, I think, that they'll identify.
Thank you very much.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Okay, next on the agenda, item six, we have a legislative report.
Um, I have House Bill 502 passed, and that just states that certain public school employees have to undergo youth suicide awareness and prevention training once every two years. What about that for today? Bye, Mom.
And number seven, the reports, any superintendent report?
Okay, every year they send me a suggested editorial that I read about school board recognition month, which is January 2019, but I'm going to ditch the script this time and just talk from my heart about what you guys all do as a school board. You obviously don't get enough recognition for the time and effort that you put in. A lot of people don't realize how many phone calls you get, and also when you're out in the community, people approach you, and you're always on duty as a school board member, so it's a valuable thing that you provide to the community. And I just want to say thank you from our staff, from our administrative staff, because this has been a great board. You guys have all worked well together, and we're really in unison on a lot of this, on all the school topics, really, and you're very involved in not just the academics, but the, you're involved with all aspects of the school district, and I know that our staff and our administrative staff feel very comfortable with all of the work that you're doing. So, instead of just reading from the script this time, we just wanted to say thanks for what you all do, and we truly do appreciate your work, and it's a tireless job, and we know that with the amount of time and effort that you put into it, you don't really get that recognition as much as you need to. So, once again, thank you, and we really do appreciate everything that you do. Thank you, Karen. The next item on my report is open enrollments. Justin and I have talked and met about this several times before we took it to our administrative staff. Financially, open enrollment has an impact on our district, and there's a line and a limit that we have to be careful of, that we don't go over and accept too many open enrolled kids on behalf of the district. But on the other hand, we, as you all know, a few years back ago, decided that we were going to go open enrollment to the state, not just to our contiguous, to our contiguous borders. The contiguous borders were just the cities that touched our borders physically, which was Huron, Firelands, and Amherst. We were prior to open, open enrolling to the state, just doing those contiguous borders, and once we opened up enrollment to the state, we picked up quite a few students. And as we're really looking at this data, and Karen will be talking just in a few minutes, a lot of those students have stayed. So, historically, I think what we've seen is we've had a lot of move-ins at the beginning when that enrollment was first opened up, and a lot of those families have stayed with us, and those families then have had their siblings come to us as well. So, when you look at the numbers, and I think we were at about 178 open enrolled students, there's a financial ramification for those students that come into our district. It benefits us. But, once again, if you go over around 190, I believe, is about the number, that if you go over that number, it then starts to impact us negatively. What we also have to think about and consider when you're looking at this open enrollment, it's not just the numbers that you have to look at, you also have to look at what the class sizes are. We've always tried in this district to look at the number of kids that we've had within the district and not have too many, our class size be too high. We want to maximize our effort of our teachers and not have too many kids within those classes. So, what the open enrollment, though, has done besides bring income into the district, it also does allow us to keep staff. Our numbers historically over the last 10 years were showing a decline. So, by picking up those numbers, it allowed us to keep staff, to keep income coming into the district, and as you know, for the last, this is my 11th year, we haven't, well, we went back to the taxpayers one time at the beginning when I was first in the district, and we decided at that time that we weren't going to want to do that. We were going to want to balance the budget. This open enrollment has helped us to balance the budget, to keep staff members working, and to keep our class sizes relatively low. So, what we wanted to be sure though that we were doing, because at the beginning of this school year, there was some freezing of the elementary levels because we were getting a little bit too high in those class sizes, and we wanted to make sure that we were prioritizing who was going to be coming into the district under that open enrollment policy that we have. And so, Justin and I, and Karen, and Lisa, and Bonnie, and really our whole administrative team, and Beth as well, Jim Molado, we all sat down and we looked at what do those numbers look like? How does that all play out? And we've got Karen Blackburn, our special ed director, that specifically spent quite a bit of time on this, and she's up there at the mic tonight. And Karen, can you break this down for us just a little bit better?
Sure.
In terms of numbers and show us what this means.
So, one of the things we wanted to look at, and I have to say Joni was very much helpful, she's my secretary today, getting me those last figures. We wanted to take a look at how do we use the staff we have and maximize the number of open enrolled kids, but not go over so that it costs the district more money. And so, it started with some calculations in that regard. Then as we were talking a little bit more, we said, okay, what is our net gain versus net loss? So, if we took a look at how many kids moved in versus how many left us, what did that leave us as far as a net gain and a net loss? And I'll kind of go through some of those charts today. On a side note or a good note, I just kind of added up the numbers while we were talking, and if we look at the number of kids who moved into our district for the first time, we grew about 85 kids this year that were first time just moved into our district, that maybe weren't open enrolled or non-public, they were all straight move-ins. So, that's a plus, I think, for the community as well as our school district, because that's quite a few kids. And I think a large chunk of those kids went into Bonnie's first grade because we were looking at numbers and it was quite bad.
So, was that, was that a net number that you gave minus the transfers out?
I'll show you the transfers out versus the ends. So, as we were talking about this process, the way the process has been working is you enroll your child and you click the box in the enrollment, and that was it. And no one really knew what was open enrolled, how many were coming, how many were going. We'd get to the start of the year and suddenly find out we have all these kids that we didn't necessarily plan for. And so, part of this process was trying to decide to do a paper application. So, the second paper you have in here is a copy of the paper application. What we did was we reviewed applications for various districts across the state and decided that this was probably the best plan and would get us the most information. We spoke with some attorneys to decide what was appropriate and what wasn't appropriate as far as what we could put in here. as far as what we could put in here. The first sheet that you have is just a list of some of the guidelines to help families kind of better understand what open enrollment would look like. We decided to make a change to possibly the open enrollment window. The way it has worked in the past is we took everybody whenever they decided to come, which could drastically, when you're talking in Bonnie's building in particular, and she's sitting with 25 kids in every classroom, and we get five new kids who open enroll now, she's having trouble even housing some of those kids at this point. So we wanted to have a window for when they'd come, so we can better plan for our staffing and our classroom side of this. So we're looking at a March 1st to a May 1st window, which is the recommended window when you look at open enrollment from ODE, with parents being notified by June 15th. That'll let us know how many returning kids that we have as of that point, and then make some decisions what we need to do from there. We do have some, you'll see when we start looking at numbers, we have some grades that could take quite a few open enrolled kids. So we thought, we don't want to close it if we have open spots for them. So we'll reopen July 1 to July 31, if those seats aren't full in certain grade levels. But it gives us that right to maybe close some of those grades if we don't have open spots. Parent notification for that second window by August 10th, still plenty of time for them to make sure that they can get into another place, and no open enrollment throughout the school year, so that there can't be staffing changes. We had quite a bit of discussion about the kids that move in mid-year that would want to open enroll. We get a lot of kids that, that maybe are attendance issues, maybe are grade issues or behavior issues, or whatever that may be, why they would make a school year change mid-year, and just decided it would be best if we closed it at the beginning of the year for staffing and needs of kids. So that enrollment would be based on June 1st. It could reopen if seats are not filled. Basically, what we did is we looked at a calculation of, and Justin is the one who sent this to me, an auditor sent a how to maximize open enrollment calculation. So I put all of the staff and students in this calculation. And then I also tried to look at the trend data from last year and to see how much we grew. And then we looked at possibly putting some special programming caps on, so things like special ed, preschool, workforce, those are considered special programs, that we need to put some separate caps on. So if you look at the 18, 19 enrollment numbers, and you guys have this in the third sheet of your packet. I did it by grade level, so you can see, we'll just take first grade. There were 18 newly enrolled kids in first grade. From the end of school last year to this current point, we've had 18 new kids enrolled. None of those were open enrolled. We have 13 current open enrolled, which means we had 13 enroll as kindergarteners, they stayed. So your net gain there was we gained seven kids in first grade. So if you kind of follow that down, green were pluses of number of kids we got, and reds are if we lost kids in that particular grade level. So you can see, as we're looking at spots and how many open spots we might have, we've got to take into account that we're growing between two and seven kids in almost every grade level, just through enrollment. Your tentative grade level caps, we've spent a lot of time talking about, how do you, how do you quantify this? How do you do the spots for the number of kids? So I'm just, Bonnie's building's the easiest, we'll continue with the first grade. If we say there are five first grade teachers currently, that means you have room for about 125 kids. We have 118 that are resident students, so they're not open enrolled. So if you take 125 minus 118, that gets you seven spots. We currently have eight open enrolled students at that grade level. So when we're looking down through here, what would be the open enrolled spots? We grew seven kids last year. So if we grow another seven, we have one spot available for an open enrolled kid. So that's kind of where the numbers are coming from. So I didn't put tentative open enrolled spots for elementary, because I think that's a serious conversation we have to have more about, because if we're growing seven and eight kids, it doesn't leave you much room to bring in any open enrolled kids, because I know her building's pretty full as far as classroom size, and those classrooms are pretty stacked full. That's 25 first graders in the room. But if you look at the other spots across the board, you see the resident students, how many are open enrolled, and then you look at possible 19, 20 open enrolled spots. So we could have 21 kids, we could have 10 kids and nine kids, those are the growth rates for those. So if we put a cap number on the number of spots, we're looking at, in fourth grade, we could have 29 open enrolled kids. In fifth grade, you could have 12 open enrolled kids. So kind of keeping those numbers, my, our concern, and actually Lisa brought this up, is seniors. We have 19 seniors for next year who are open enrolled, but we're looking at only 10 spots. So we have to have a serious conversation of, we don't want to ask a senior to leave their senior year. So how are we going to get creative and make sure we can have appropriate staffing and services for the kids and not ask those seniors to not return? Specialized programs, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this. I know there've been a lot of questions about how many open enrolled kids are special ed. If we take out Cork Place, there's about 26, 28 special ed open enrolled kids. So part of the proposal here is that we look at not to exceed 70% of the max caseload divided by the number of providers in the building. And I'll show you what that looks like. Our mod intense population, our community-based room, our behavior rooms, our workforce rooms, those more specialized programs, 25% of max caseload. And I'd like to just explain that one second. I don't know how many of you have seen our mod intense rooms, but they are really low cognitive functioning or significant behavior kids. The law says if you have six kids with autism, that fills a room. If you have eight kids with mod intense or multiple disabilities, that fills a room. But if you have kids that are autistic and mod intense in one room, you can have 16. I think that's ridiculous. I don't want to stick 16 kids in a room. So that's where you see, that's 25% of max caseload. If we hold to the eight or 10 kids in a program like that, 25% is four or five. So when we get over four or five, we're kind of reserving spots for our own kids who might come in. And as a reference, we've had two kids with autism move in in the last week. So those spots are kind of important for us to keep open. Workforce development, not to exceed 50%, she can have 24. That means if she's over 12, it kind of reserves the spots. And preschool, we've been doing this with preschool, we accept two or three preschool open enrolled kids, the amount that comes out, too. So if you look at what does that mean for special ed? I took numbers, and all the caseloads aren't quite updated. And elementary, you see a 25-ish, because they're getting ready to do some evaluations on some kids, so those numbers might change a little bit. But looking at next year, 25-ish kids, there are three staff who do inclusion work directly in the classrooms. That's an 8.3 per case manager. If you looked at 70% of max, if they were over 11.2, they couldn't accept any. So currently, they have five special ed open enrolled kids. They could maybe take some more. But when you move to SMS and VHS, you see those numbers change. We're looking at 61 kids in middle school and 106 special ed kids in high school. Five staff in each of those, you're looking at a 12.2 ratio and a 21.2 are the current ratios, and they need to be about 11 and about 17. So they have six and 13 open enrolled kids. It's getting a little dicey at those grade levels. And really, it's about servicing the kids. Can we effectively meet the needs of all the kids if our numbers look like that? So we might have to make some further conversations around special ed. And those last few charts are in what I gave you. So the last piece of what we decided to do is, and you can see this on the first sheet in your, in your handout, is how do we prioritize? How do we make decisions about who gets a spot for open enrollment and who doesn't? And so we looked at a couple different places and decided that we liked one of them the best. So during that March 1st to May 1st window, we timestamp all, we would timestamp all of the applications, and then they would go through this prioritization. So first priority would be any parent or grandparent of an employee in Vermillion Schools. They would look at spots first. Then current enrolled open kids, current open enrolled kids would be the second. Siblings of those, kids that were maybe previously enrolled, let's say they were here a year ago, moved in and want to come back to our district, or their parents moved out of district at the end of the year and they'd like to stay here. Students that are alumni, kids of alumni, and then finally, just kind of a first come, first served. So every year, those numbers could adjust based on our district enrollment, so the number of spots could adjust, and we'd have to come back through and reprioritize. Where it gets a little crazy is special ed, again, first you have to decide if there's a special ed spot. And if there is, then they would come into this prioritization like every other kid. But if there's no special ed spot, then they actually don't come into the prioritization. So that's kind of what we've been looking at, and you see the couple forms there. It really is about quality of services, and I know people have been asking how many special ed kids. I know there's been talk that we've had a lot of behaviors coming up in, from our open enrollment kids. Legally, we have to accept them all unless they've been suspended for more than 10 consecutive days or expelled. And so this maybe puts a few parameters around, because once they become ours, once we accept open enrollment, they are our student, and they're treated like every other student. And they stay until they decide not to apply again. So I, I think some parameters around our open enrollment is a good thing, and I think looking at the numbers is important, because when we're talking staffing and making some decisions, we want to make sure that our resident students can be taken care of to the best of our ability.
So, two questions. One, the process of reapplying every year, has that always been policy or is that new?
They reapply every year by checking the box now. So everybody has to update in the system. How anybody applied for open enrollment every other year has been they check the box. So that was the application.
So this is different?
This is different.
So my concern is, how are we going to communicate to every open enrolled parent now so that they don't accidentally miss the window and get closed out?
We intend for Sandy, I don't remember if you talked to her, but somebody has talked to Sandy about sending a letter to all currently open enrolled families to let them know, send a copy of the application and the new windows, so that they are all clear what is going on.
And in addition to that, besides the letter, we would put it out by email, we would put it out on the website, we would use our social media.
The period was March to May? I mean, would it be, would it be fair to say, you know, if you put it out to all the open enrolled people prior to March, and by mid-April, there's a handful you haven't heard from, would we follow up and contact?
Certainly.
My concern is if people are going to get closed out and have a, have an issue, you know, if, just because we changed the process, and maybe, you know, I, I don't, I don't see half the stuff that comes over my daughter's folder, you know?
Right, right. And I think it's important, we want to keep as many of those as possible. I think the last slide kind of shows you, we had 178 currently. If we close VAS, the numbers equal 186. So we're not looking at cutting, the, the issue is really, you can accept more at some grade levels, because we've got the staffing to support them. If we keep VAS open, we were looking at maybe 20 spots, but I'll be honest with Bonnie, I've had this conversation, I'm getting really concerned that there may not be space for them over there.
And the other comment you made was that, once they, once they're accepted in, they're our students, and they, they remain with us until they choose not to be, but with the reapplication process. If, I mean, if that's the case, shouldn't that be the first priority over children of employees, or?
And that can be a potential.
I mean, can a, can a child of an employee knock out someone who, who is already here but wants to stay?
Potentially, yeah.
So they're not necessarily guaranteed a spot?
And I would say every year, no one is guaranteed a spot, and that, that is in that parent document, only because we could have a 21 influx of our own kids, and there's no spot for a kid that was here last year.
So there a difference between an open enrollment contiguous areas around Vermillion as opposed to the rest of Ohio, or is it all considered the same?
As, as far as?
As kids being, you know, would we favor somebody in Firelands as opposed to Columbus?
And the problem is, once the board makes the decision what it is, so we could say, they call it J-Center contiguous districts, we could say that's what we want to do, is just that, or you say you open it to the state, once you open it statewide, you can't prioritize on that. And, and we looked at that, because we had that conversation, but districts like Huron, who we do have kids back and forth, are not contiguous, so.
One of, we, I brought it up, one of these a while back, is Indian Ridge on Vermillion, you know, it's in the city limits, but it's Firelands District.
Right.
And I had residents there, but, you know, they moved Vermillion in the city limits, thinking they're going to go to Vermillion, and realized it went to Firelands, so that was one of the ones that did the open enrollment. They got it this time, but they have a younger, a younger daughter that'll be starting, so.
And, and that's another issue. There could be a spot for a kid in second grade, because we have an open spot, but not in third grade. So then you have siblings, one is accepted and one is not. So that becomes a problem.
Yeah.
I will say, I, again, I believe we're at a tipping point at the elementary. I think we have plenty of spots kind of in other areas, but the elementary is really at a tipping point.
You don't want to look at this as just a financial decision. And our team looked at all of the things that are involved with this, and I, I think that it took a lot of planning and a lot of effort to get to where we are, because you have to look at all these numbers, and you've got to crunch, crunch all the numbers. And then, it's not just the numbers, once again, too, it's the families, and you've got to think about what the ramifications are to those families. But number one, I think the board would all agree, is that first and foremost, it's our own residents that have to have the best education we can provide them, and that our class sizes can't be ridiculously high, because we've had a policy of open enrollment that, really the way it's set right now, we have to put, we have to put the limitations on them, because during the school year, they could come in, and it can affect, and it has affected our numbers, especially at the elementary school. If we right now have an influx of open enrolled, that could really throw things out of bounds, so. We have to have these parameters, we believe, and there's a little bit more work to be done on this, but we're on the right track overall, I think, and that's why we wanted to bring it to you as a board.
If we, I guess, is the problem in the elementary school, is it actual space or is it staff? Because, yeah, I think we talked about if, what happened, if we move preschool out, would that free up some more space?
That's what I was wondering about. The preschool, to me, I think it's a great thing for the community, but if our, if we need more space for our kindergarten, first, second graders, is there somewhere else the preschool can go to give the elementary more room? I mean, I don't know, you probably, is the, what is the preschool is?
I mean, spaces?
They have two of the kindergarten classrooms? So we currently have a kindergarten classroom in what was a first grade classroom? It seems like every year, we're kind of like, trying to figure out, where is this first grade going to go now, or who's switching, you know, teachers? grade going to go now, or who's switching, you know, teachers going from kindergarten to first, second grade teacher to this, you know, it's.
So if we move.
My question is, is the, is the preschool hindering what the elementary school needs to be doing?
Or would that make it, are num, if we?
Well, we're on a cusp, is really what it comes down to, like the kinder, all of our classes, K-3, are right at that 25, 26 spot. So if you take away open enrolled kids or whatever, you keep the five teachers in each grade level. If you, if you add more open enrolled kids, you tip over to now you need six teachers and now you need that space. So I think what Karen showed was, you can keep it at five and keep it, you know, where it is, but you're going to have to lose some of those open enrolled kids down the road. So, I mean, that's the, that's just kind of area. And I think Justin, you and I've had this conversation about how many open enrolled kids, let's say we opened it and we had the space to, to put a room in, and we'll just use first grade, how many open enrolled kids financially equals a teacher?
Right.
And then can we get that many open enrolled kids at first grade to make that worthwhile?
Well, and one of the things too, historically, now, it's changing a little bit here, but historically, we've had a declining enrollment. And so if you look at it from a higher level, if we have a declining enrollment, it doesn't make sense to hire staff.
Right.
To bring in.
A couple more kids.
Especially, you know, an open enrollment student brings in $6,020. Nowhere in the state is anybody educating students for $6,020 a day. So again, we don't want to get into that, that position of bringing on additional staff if our historical trend is declining now with more students coming in, if it starts up in uptick, then that's a different, that's a whole different discussion altogether.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Well, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Those are the two items that we're on the superintendent's report, and that's all I have for tonight. Oh, I do have certificates for you, so besides telling you you did a great job you're doing, we do have a certificate for you, so.
Oh, sorry.
That's all I have down on the superintendent's.
Head and D, treasurer's, treasurer's report.
Recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for November 30th, 2018, and December 31st, 2018.
I'll move.
I'll send that.
We'll go forward through.
Let me go through real quick here. We'll just jump forward here to December. None of these reports are anything standing out that would cause concern. Looking at the December report, through the month of December, the district has received $11.4 million in general fund revenue compared to $11.6 in fiscal year 18 and $11.5 in fiscal year 17. So our revenues are on pace to collect the average general fund revenue we've typically seen in years past. They've hit different months, as you can see on the bar chart there, but once you go through, we take $11.4, $11.6, and $11.5. So we're right on pace there. Through the month of December, food service revenue, the district's received $12,433 in food service revenue compared to $330,798 in fiscal year 18 and $272,275 in fiscal year 17. So again, our food service revenue seems to be on par with years past as well. And then when we look at all funds for the month of December, revenue side of things, through the month of December, the district has received $12.4 million in all funds compared to $12.7 million in fiscal year 18 and $13 million in fiscal year 17. The reason you're seeing that slight decline when you look at it from an all-fund standpoint, we're not quite receiving the same amount of money we received in the past for IDEA, Title I. Those numbers have decreased a little bit, our federal funding's decreased a little bit, and you're seeing it reflected here. Looking at our expenditures for the general fund through the month of December, we've expended $11.5 million compared to $12.3 in fiscal year 18 and $12.7 in fiscal year 18, or who knows, our fiscal year 17. So again, we're, revenue's staying flat, and we've done a pretty good job of reducing our expenditures.
Is that, on the all-in-all, a pretty good job reducing expenditures? Is there anything that's time-sensitive, like, like something hasn't hit yet that would have hit in prior years?
No, not really a set financial thing. We're operating with four less staff than we had last year. We had a 0% increase on our health insurance, so we didn't see the large expenditures there even with four less staff. You know, it's all propped there. Looking at food service expenditures through the month of December, we've expended $256,672 in food service compared to $332,000 in fiscal year 18 and $302,000 in fiscal year 17. So again, our food service revenue's pretty much staying consistent with years past.
How, that was the equipment?
Yeah, yeah, well, the equipment hit, I'm going to say, the equipment for this year hasn't hit yet.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you can catch yourself back up there. All revenue, when we're looking at expenditures through the month of December, we've expended $12.6 million from all funds compared to $13.7 last year and $14.4 in fiscal year 17. So again, the trend of us reducing our expenditures begins through negotiating different contracts with vendors, taking a look at our supplies and materials, taking a look at our cap rate, a little bit less staff, our, our health insurance benefits with a 0% increase, you're seeing all that reflected in the all-fund expenditures here. And then lastly, we're going to look at cash. For the general fund cash through the month of December, the district has a total of $14.6 million in cash compared to $13.2 million last year and $12.7 in fiscal year 17. Again, it's not that we're receiving any additional revenue, it's just we're able to curb expenditures a little bit. Looking at our food service cash, through the month of December, we have a total of $356,000 in cash compared to $270,000 this time last year and $189,000 per year previous. Again, that's going to decrease significantly, we are purchasing some things, some upgrades to the chillers there for the food service, yeah. And then lastly is all cash. Again, through the month of December, total cash is $17.7 million compared to $16.5 in fiscal year 18 and $16.1 in fiscal year 17. And then the last part of this is our investments. Again, staying pretty consistent, month of September, $26.5 million, October, $37.5 million, I'm sorry, $1,000. November, I put the sentence on there, drew me up. November, $31.5 million, and then December, $25, $24.5 million. So when you look at it as a whole, through December, we've earned a total of $166,315.94 on interest compared to $87,261.51 last year. So we've almost doubled our investments there.
Is there any questions?
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to accept the following donations. $50,000 from the Adel Covannic Trust, $1,000 from TJ Investment Team LLC to the wrestling team, $2,210.34 from Illyria Charities to the bowling team, $250 from Vermillion Lions Club to VHS Speech and Debate, $30 from VLSD staff to the VHS Rotary Fund, $20 in the class of 1968 Ladies to Sailor Support Fund, $400 from Chelseaa Fisher to Operations for Outstanding Lunch Balances, and 100 free t-shirts to the National Honors Society from All American Publishing. And then Phil, I think you were going to speak on the Covannic Trust there.
Yes, so we're grateful for every donation that we get, but obviously, when you see one on here for $50,000, that stands out a little bit, and this was a former retired teacher from our district that had the foresight to invest her money wisely, and she gave a very sizable donation. This is actually half of the amount that we're getting, we're getting a total of $100,000. So there'll be another $50,000 coming in February. And so I got a call from Zach Dolick in town here letting us know that this money would be coming in, and she didn't put any stipulations on how the money was to be used. So Justin and I have talked about what, what are the priorities, and we'll be sharing that, I'm sure, with what we think needs to be done. We're very grateful, obviously, for every donation, but that, this is, this was exceptional.
For something like this, would we want to do whatever it's used for, do a little plaque or something, or recognize or something?
Sure, we can, we can, if, if it's going to be used in some sort of a lump sum way, we would definitely want to do that, so we'll work on that and come back to you with some thoughts on how that would be used.
I know she was a music teacher, is there anything, any part that could be used for?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I said, yeah, I said art, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't. But any of that, is there any need for a sound system or any part that could be used for?
I don't, there's always a need for musical instruments, so that might be one way we would look at it. Could be a possible option. Some of our musical instruments are aged, so that might be a possible option.
We'll be to, to Mr. Stark.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the Lake Takerode for $13,104 for 500 ClearPass onboard licenses, that's attachment C.
I'll move. Awesome.
What is ClearPass onboard licenses?
That's my question.
Yep, yes. I'm going to defer that to Mr. Briggman over there.
It'll be short, it's a way to onboard staff devices under the, the network. There is a, a breach, and so instead of having one password for every device, it'll be authenticated per user, so.
Ezina?
Yes.
Call it off.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the then-and-now invoices, attachment D. The first one is for $4,464.10 for the Stowe fundraising. What this was, is there wasn't a PO in place to purchase this. Ultimately, they, they didn't know what their purchase order amount would be because they didn't buy the materials, and so when it came to that announcement, since it's over $3,000, I'm not able to approve it. So I'm asking you to approve this res, or this purchase order along with the $4,175 from the Lorraine County Community College, it was for books, we have their sort of, is that?
That's it. Any questions, discussion? Call it off.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
I caught you there. Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. And lastly, recommend a resolution to participate in the Ohio School Board's Legal Assistance Fund for the calendar year 2019 and to authorize the treasurer to pay legal assistance fund $250.
I'll move. Second.
What this is, is the Ohio School Board asks all the school districts in Ohio, what they do is they pool all that money, and with that pooled money, they then research things, they, they put together legal precedents, and then they pass that information on to all school districts here for, for the thousand little things that you'll see.
Any questions? Call it off.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Item 8, items for discussion. Nine, we have consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of a consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such items be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, meetings of the December 10th, 2018 board meeting, attachment E. Number two, recommend a resolution to adopt a school calendar for the 2019, 2020 year as provided, attachment F. Adopt the revisions to the following district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by Niola for the first read, 1623, 3260.01, 3123, 4122, 4123, 4140, 4162, 4362, 5113, 5517, 5610, 5610.2, 5610.303, 5611, 6320, 6423, and 8141, attachment G. Adopt a revision to the following district policy, 6235, and accompanying guidelines as recommended by Niola for second read, that's attachment H. Adopt a resolution to approve open enrollment agreement for excess costs for children with disabilities with occupancy schools, attachment I. Approve the following employment actions. Just do a, just a good one. Feeble assets for listed sheriff, plus driver, remainder of 2018 contract year. One-year classified contract for the 2018, 2019 contract year has listed. One-year limited contract with a citizen of classified substitute for the 2018, 2019 contract year to the following has listed. One-year limited supplemental contract for the 2018, 2019 contract year to the following has listed. One-year limited additional duties contract for the 2018, 2019 contract year to the following has listed. Does anybody, anything you need to be pulled up? I'll move.
Awesome, Ken.
Questions, comments? Call it off, please.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Item 10, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item 11, public participation. The board personal reserves right to win the time. Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody? Anyone? Item 12, date and locations of upcoming board meetings located at Vermillion High School, 250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, unless noted. Regular meeting Monday, February 11th, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. Regular meeting Monday, March 11th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. And regular meeting Monday, April 8th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. So they need the dates. Item 13, recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose or manner required to be kept constitutional.
I'll move.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Havermill?
Yes.
Ms. Step?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.